Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, March 4th, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening, everyone.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
And to her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Pastor Tim Brokoff from Midland's Christian Church to please come forward and offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Pastor, thanks for being with us.
Thank you for the honor. Let's pray. Almighty God, Maker of heaven and earth, we come to you, the giver of every good and perfect gift. We thank you for the gift of this day and for the opportunity to gather together to do the work of this community. In this time of year in which we experience almost daily changes in the weather, we acknowledge that you are the one who does not change like shifting shadows. Great is your faithfulness. We lift our hearts and voices to you and pray for the members of this council and the other officials who serve this community. It is fitting and right that we do so. We thank you for their service, and we ask you to protect their families as they too sacrifice for the betterment of the town of Lexington. Father of lights, we ask for your light to shine on this meeting. We humbly ask that your guidance would be evident to all. We would pray that each person here would seek to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you and with each of our neighbors. May this meeting accomplish the common good for which it is intended. Thank you for allowing us to live in a land in which the people have a say in their government. May it ever be the land of the free and the home of the brave. So we pray in the name that is above every name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you very much for being with us. A pleasure to see you again.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yes, sir. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Manis if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report to you tonight on our executive session this evening. Council met in an executive session. We discussed two legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, a second issue regarding advice regarding agenda items. We had one contractual issue. It was a downtown economic development issue. No vote was taken. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So move.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will ask for any deletions on tonight's agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that needs to be deleted? Very good. Hearing none. At this time, we'll move into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the work session and special council meeting on February 19, 2019 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to work session February 19 and special council meeting February 19? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Those are adopted. At this time, we will move into presentations. Our first presentation is proclamations from Councilmember Steve Baker. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. If I could, please get Dr. Ebony Bowers and Ms. Ivana Garcia to come forward. Thank you. It's good to see y'all.
Good to see you.
This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, commending Ms. Lexington, 2019, Ivana Garcia. Whereas Ivana Garcia is a third-year master's student at the University of South Carolina School of Medicine, where she is working on physician assistant studies and a member of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the South Carolina Academy of Physician Assistance, and the American Academy of Physician Assistance. And whereas she was crowned Ms. Lexington, 2019, in November 2018, and whereas Ivana's platform is mental health awareness, and she established the first student-led mental health organization at the University of Tennessee at Martin, and her career goal is to further educate others and advocate mental health awareness by becoming a pediatric behavioral health physician assistant. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Ivana Garcia is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Ms. Lexington, 2019, and has expressed best wishes in all of her efforts as a representative of the University of South Carolina and the Town of Lexington in Ms. South Carolina 2019 pageant dated this fourth day of March, 2019. Mayor Steve McDougall. Come down here. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Council and the Town of Lexington for this wonderful honor. I've had such a great time representing Lexington so far, and I'm not done yet, so I just hope to make you guys proud come this June and until the end of my reign this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Round two.
All right. For this one, let me get Ms. Ashley Smith to come forward.
Thank you.
A proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, commending Ms. Lexington teen, 2019, Ashley Smith. Whereas Ashley Smith is from Casey and is a junior at Airport High School, where she serves as a senator in the Airport High School Student Government, a membership of the Fellowship of Christian -- a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a Beta Club member, a National Honor Society member, a member of the Spanish Club, and is valedictorian of Airport High School. And whereas Ashley serves in her community as a volunteer for the Salvation Army, Harvest Hope, the Shriners Hospital, and the South Carolina Children's Miracle Network Hospital Events. And whereas she was crowned Ms. Lexington teen, 2019, in November 2018, and whereas Ashley's platform is called Ready to Love, a nonprofit foundation which gives direct aid to foster families to buy fire alarms, furniture, and supplies. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Ashley Smith is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Ms. Lexington teen and has expressed best wishes in all of her efforts as a representative of Airport High School, the County of Lexington, and the State of South Carolina in the Ms. South Carolina Teen Pageant dated this fourth day of March, 2019. Mayor Steve McDougall.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Town of Lexington, and I'm honored to represent you guys as I go to the Ms. South Carolina Pageant in June, and I hope that all of my actions in your community will continue to benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Let me get Ms. Haley Tomlin to come forward.
Well, we have a substitute for Haley.
Understood.
We have Ivana's Palmetto Princess, Selena Magny, that will be filling in for her.
Sounds good. Come on up. I'm going to read it first. All right. Thank you. All right. So this one is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, commending Ms. West Lexington Columbia teen, 2019, Haley Tomlin. And tell me one more time what was your name?
Selena Magny.
Selena. Thank you for being here. All right. Whereas Haley Tomlin is a sophomore at Lawrence District 55 High School, where she is the legislative liaison for the South Carolina 4-H State Teen Council, vice president of the Greenville County 4-H Teen Council, vice president of the Stablemates 4-H Club, the female representative on the LDHS Student Council, a member of the Beta Club, manager of the girls' soccer team, and a cellist in the Chamber Orchestra. And whereas she was crowned Ms. West Columbia teen, 2019, in November 2018, and whereas Haley's platform is Let's Grow Some Leaders, Educating Youth About 4-H, an organization that provides outstanding leadership opportunities to youth throughout our state and country and has something for everyone. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that Haley Tomlin is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Ms. West Columbia teen, 2019, and has expressed best wishes in all of her efforts as a representative of Lawrence District 55 High School in the city of West Columbia in Ms. South Carolina Outstanding Teen Pageant dated this fourth day of March, 2019. Mayor Steve McDougall.
All right. Congratulations.
Very quickly, on behalf of Haley, I would like to say thank you all so much for the great honor. For myself and my mother, Constance Fleming, we are the co-local executive directors for the Ms. Lexington Scholarship Competition, and we are privileged to have these young ladies represent us on the state level. And at the state level this year, Ms. South Carolina will be given $60,000 in scholarship to its winner. And that's in addition to every other scholarship that is there. They have community service scholarships, they have STEM scholarships, you name it, they probably have a scholarship for it. It is our privilege to bring this to our community, and we hope that you all will support us and continue to support us in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Manis.
Ebony, I would like to thank you and your mother for stepping up. I was on the phone with your mother one night during the Ms. South Carolina Pageant.
Yes.
And they were introducing the ladies, and I said, "There's nobody from Lexington." And she said, "That needs to be changed." And so y'all did that, and I appreciate it, and good luck to you, young ladies. Thank you for representing Lexington, and I look forward to seeing you at the Pageant. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. At this time, we will move right into a vision plan update for March 2019. Mark your calendars because spring is in full swing. Well, not this week. It took a break this week and is going to go back, but it's in full swing at the Ice House Amphitheater, and we hope to see you all at all of these wonderful events we're going to have at the Ice House Amphitheater. First up is the St. Patrick Shamrot Parade and Festival this Saturday, March 9, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The parade will be at 2:00 on Main Street. The festival will be in the Ice House Amphitheater parking lot, and will feature amusement rides, face painters, balloon animals, food, and Irish dancers. We hope to see you all there this Saturday for that parade. Next, we move into movies in the park. Our first movie in the park is Friday, March 15, 2019. It will be Jumanji. It is a PG-13 movie, and that will begin at 8:00. Our second movie is March 29, 2019. That one will be a PG movie as well, Peter Rabbit. And both of those movies will start at 8:00 at the Ice House Amphitheater. The Lexington Live Spring Concert Series is proudly presents the series that will start in the Ice House Amphitheater, so save the dates. Thursday evening at 6:30 p.m., beginning April 11, with The Embers. They will be returning, I think for their second visit, third -- first visit. First visit, we're having The Embers. I thought they'd already been. April 18 will be a band called Whiskey Run, and April 25 will be a band called Finesse.
Fourth time.
Fourth time?
Because they're that good.
Oh. Very good. So they have been here before. I wouldn't. All right. Again, that begins -- the Lexington Live Concert Series begins April 11. For more information, please visit the IceHouseAmphitheater.com website. At this time, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jenny Lane and I-20 Exit Ramp Project is making good progress despite all this rainy weather. Final paving and new lane configurations are expected in the next two weeks. Please use caution in this area as we're continuing construction. The South Church Street sidewalk is also making significant progress as weather is permitting. The work stretches between Gibson Road and Woodland Drive continue to be aware of traffic delays and lane closures in this area. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, March 13, at 8:00 a.m. on the third floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway situations, or potholes that need repairs, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will take the meeting into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5422-02-014, located at 209B Parker Street. Is there anyone here who wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Our second item this evening is final reading of an ordinance amending 1550308 of the zoning ordinance parking -- excuse me, required parking. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance amending Section 1540618 of the Land Development Ordinance in reference to dumpster pads. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Our final item this evening is final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business this evening is read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5422-02-014, located at 209B Parker Street. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. IBW Local Union 772 owns .37 acres located at 209B Parker Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A meeting office is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Parker Street is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their January meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and local road classification for Parker Street. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
I need to ask Mr. Hanson if I could, just for clarification. Mr. Hanson, under protected residential and high-density residential, you know, I know this is surrounded by homes over there. What precludes them from renting this out for a party at a later date?
We are annexing it with the protected residential zoning on it because that's what's appropriate for the area, but it is a grandfathered use.
So there's no restriction from them renting it out for birthday parties or such?
I wouldn't think so. It's a meeting facility, so as long as they continue to use it for a meeting facility, they're allowed to do that.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very good. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, final reading of an ordinance amending 1550308 of the zoning ordinance required parking. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Section 1550308 of the zoning ordinance allows up to 33% of the required parking spaces in a commercial development to be designated as compact spaces. These spaces are two feet narrower and three feet shorter than a standard parking space. Many times, a large number of compact spaces will go unused, and there have been complaints about too many of these spaces in certain developments. After discussing this issue with planning -- issue, the Planning Commission recommended amending this ordinance to limit the number of compact spaces allowed in a commercial development to no more than 10% of the required parking spaces. Mr. Mayor, make a motion for final reading approval.
Todd makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Carnes?
Just in retrospect, I guess a lot of these spaces are going unused, but in our conversations with those who have these commercial parking lots, I mean, it's up to their discretion about whether or not they change their striping and take these back to full parking spaces. I mean, they did it intentionally on the front end, found it wasn't useful, but even before then, there's nothing to preclude them from restriping. If they're narrower, they're probably going to lose some spaces. So is there a way for us to retroactively look back and say we would show some lenience if you would take these to full-scale parking spaces even though you're going to lose some? And maybe it doesn't quite fit the ordinance because you've lost a few, and you see what I'm saying?
I do. Yes, sir. You would have to -- I mean, they're going to be grandfathered with the spaces they have, so there's not going to be any requirement for them to change the -- you know, if they've got 33% in compact, they're not going to have to change any of them. You could modify the ordinance to allow for them to meet parking requirements with the existing parking space if they do, or with the existing size of the parking lot, even though they'll have less parking spaces than they're required. But this ordinance doesn't do that.
Right.
That is something you could do. It wasn't recommended from the Planning Commission or brought up before, so it's not included in that, but it is something that you could maybe send to the Planning Commission to see if they want to further modify the ordinance to allow for somebody to make those changes.
I would certainly like to ask that question because it seems to only make sense that maybe they're going to take 30 compact spaces and they can only get 22 regular spaces, but the whole reason we're doing this is 30 aren't being used. I'm going to have the Director of Planning Commission, Mr. Keith, maybe we could ask if that was discussed. Do you think that's a logical next step in this process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We did not discuss that specific issue, although I think there are mechanisms to do that. I would think they would have a very good argument with Board of Zoning Appeals if they're grandfathered in and they've got 33%, and they want to cut back to 10%, and they may be five short. I would think there would be a good discussion there to be had. So we could definitely go back and look at the ordinance, but I think there are ways we could also address that without adding that back into the ordinance.
All right. Satisfies my questions, other than, I guess, to start that process, I guess, you guys, are you comfortable just starting that process and Planning Commission to ask that question since you guys generated this and make sure that, A, there's a mechanism to do it, and B, that we communicate it out to everybody that's affected to say, "Hey, if you want to get rid of these spaces, make them more usable, we will have a grandfather situation or a new ordinance or whatever we need to make that feasible?"
If I could suggest, before taking that step, we may find that many of these parking lots build in excess of the required space, and so it may be the case that there is nobody that really that would impact, and we probably could take a few of the -- but take a look at a few of the ones that we know about that use these, because not everybody chooses this option. Matter of fact, few choose this option, but it may not be an actual issue because there may not be anybody that couldn't do it if they wanted to because they already have extra spaces than what that we require. Because a lot of big chains say, you know, we might say you need 100 spaces, but the chain says, "No, we don't build less than 150." So you end up with more than is required. So maybe we could take a look at that on a staff level, and then if council wishes, if it looks like it is an issue, and we've got owners that are interested in doing that, we could pursue that at that time if that sounds like a reasonable alternative.
Sure. Yeah. If I could just make that request, it sounds like we probably have some consensus around that and communicate that out.
Sure.
Because I don't remember the exact business, but I remember one had a unique pain point with this. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Any further discussion? Mr. Carnes made a motion. Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department.
Did I skip one?
I'm sorry.
Number three.
No, we'll go back. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance amending Section 1540618 of the Land Development Ordinance Dumpster Pads. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Section 1540618 of the Land Development Ordinance requires dumpster pads to include drains that are tied into the sanitary sewer system. However, the treatment plant no longer accepts this type of effluent, making it necessary to amend this ordinance. During the January meeting, the Planning Commission recommended amending the ordinance to require dumpster pads to have drains with approved filters that are tied into the stormwater system. I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
Is passing this ordinance, is this going to be something where a bunch of businesses are going to have an expense to correct something?
So they're not going to have to change that if we've already got it in place, but new businesses will have to comply. But saying that, it's probably about the same cost because it's essentially a grease trap that's full of sand is what the filter is, and they have had to put something in before. So it shouldn't be a significant impact. It's just a different way to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker, final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of Myrtle Beach Police Department. This agreement is for Memorial Day Bike Weekend. The proposed agreement is attached. I make a motion for a final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that because I'm glad they're down there when I'm there. Chief.
Councilmember Manis makes a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. At this time, I have filed a written notice of recusal for myself on new business items number one and number two, and will now therefore turn over control of the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem for those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first new business item is annexation of a Lexington County Tax Map Number 3300-04-111, located in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. And Councilmember Manis, would you read that since the council? Carnes is reading it?
I'll take it.
Okay. Carnes is reading it since Baker's -- I mean, Law's not here.
Just pick any Todd. I'll be the Todd.
You be our Todd.
All right. Old Cherokee Investors owns 19.37 acres located at the rear of Sterling Bridge subdivision and has petitioned to annex the property. Phases four and five of the subdivision with 53 additional lots are planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, too. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning for this property. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And the mayor also accused itself from new business item number two, annexation of Lexington County tax map, number 3300-04-09, located in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. And this one is actually mine, so Mungo Home Properties LLC owns 36.5 acres located at the rear of the Sterling Bridge subdivision and has petitioned to annex the property. The remaining phases of the subdivision are planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential, too. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning for the property. I make a motion for first reading of approval. And do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Manis seconded it. And any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And you can have it back, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. Item number three, our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Kershaw County Sheriff's Office. The proposed agreement is attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam makes a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. First reading of an ordinance amending retail and commercial garbage collection hours. I believe we're going to bump that to Councilmember Steve Baker because Councilmember Carnes picked up for Councilmember Laugh. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. February 19, 2019, work session, Town Council reviewed several options for commercial solid waste collection. A motion was made to place the item on council's March 4, 2019 agenda for an amendment to section 93.57, last amended on August 19, 2013, to change the hours of retail and commercial solid waste collection from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., from that to 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and remain 7:00 a.m. 7:00 p.m. on Saturday. I make a motion for the topic of conversation for first reading approval of an amendment section 93.57, changing retail and commercial garbage collection hours to 6:00 a.m. 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. 7:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
For the purpose of discussion only, I will second it.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Manis.
This change came about from some problems that my neighborhood had been having when we changed it back in 2013. So I'm opposed to changing this, even though the pickup time is seven to seven, we still have trouble with the trucks coming earlier, and so Chief has had to have his officers write tickets, and so I do not agree with changing this at this time.
Very good. Ms. Manis, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, it wasn't just in the neighborhoods that were affected by it either. It was in the historic district downtown that's affected if you do it earlier also, so I'm opposed to it also.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, you know, I made the motion to put it on the agenda and to make the change, but after the last two weeks of trying to find a solution, I don't see where there's a solution that benefits the citizens or the collections either. I would certainly hope that the staff can continue to work on this, and maybe if they can find us a solution to bring it back to us at a later date, if they can find something that didn't affect the citizens, which sped up the collection of some of the trash.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Councilmember Manis. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? He voted to oppose the amendment. His first vote was. Very good. That fails unanimously. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Resolution directing the Planning Commission to make recommendation for a town development impact fee. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the February 19, 2019 work session, Town Council discussed implementing a development impact fee. The first step in this process is to adopt an impact fee for Town Council to pass a resolution directing the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on an impact fee and a capital improvement plan. I'd like to make a motion of the attached resolution.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
I did not think it was necessary for Mr. Williams to read the entire resolution because it simply follows the formula in state law, so he doesn't need to read it unless somebody requests it.
Very good. Thank you. So yes, it was, the full version was in our packet, but that was a shortened.
Be entered in.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Commercial waste pickup, one-way pair modification. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. To improve downtown traffic, the town recently completed the SE6 one-way pair project. While the traffic flow has greatly improved in this area, the ability to collect commercial solid waste has been impacted. One business located at 301 North Lake Drive can no longer receive overhead dumpster service, creating a customer service issue. In conjunction with the commercial waste service provider, staff has developed a solution to this specific access issue by relocating overhead power lines and modifying the curb and access to the dumpster. The anticipated cost is approximately $30,000. Staff would direct the original site contractor perform the work in early March as part of the final closeout for the one-way pair project. Also, in regards to where these funds are coming from, they are a part of the one-way pair project budget. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Mr. Poole, I think it's important to say what the money will be spent on, not just saying that we are doing the project. Can we explain a little bit about where those costs come from?
Sure. So about, I believe, 10 or 30% of the, of the $30,000 to $10,000 in that area goes to relocate the line itself. So it's a three-phase power line, and SCNG is going to have to relocate the pole. Once that's done, the rest of it is essentially modifications of where the curb is on the road, and then I believe a little bit of the concrete pad will also be modified.
So removing the power line because it interferes with picking up the dumpster and the truck?
Exactly.
We don't want to electrocute anybody. Very good. Yes, Ms. Manis.
And that was caused through the one-way pair project, so that's something that we as a town did, and I think it's important that we take care of this for this business because we caused it.
Yes, ma'am. It was an unforeseen outcome of the modification at this one particular location.
But we're going to make it right?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. Senior Games donation request. Mr. Carnes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Greg here? Greg Jones, a 15-year town of Lexington Utilities Department employee, has qualified to compete in the 2019 National Senior Games in Albuquerque, New Mexico in June. He is requesting a donation to help cover the expense of the 3,500 to attend the games and represent Lexington, South Carolina, and he made a presentation to us in our last work session and told us about some of the medals he had won and some other things. So Mayor, I would make a motion for council to approve $1,000 for our 15-year employee to go represent us in Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. The motion, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that, that people know that in 1980, that Greg qualified to represent the United States in the Olympics, and those of you who may remember, the United States did not participate in the 1980 Olympics. So I think this is just so awesome that we can help someone on our staff, and I'm just very proud of him.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Go get them, Greg. That concludes our business for this evening. We will move into announcements. Councilmember Ron Williams has the announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lexington School District One Arts Showcase will, they're performing arts will be at the Ice House Amphitheater tomorrow, March 5, at 6:00 p.m. In addition, the student visual art projects will be on display here at Town Hall from March 5 through March 12. So if you'd like to come by and see some of their work, please do. I was able to go to the awards banquet forum last week, and there's really some, some good artists in that age group. St. Patrick's Shamrock Festival will be held at the Ice House Amphitheater, March 9, from 12 to 5, and the Shamrock Parade will start at 2 o'clock on Main Street. We hope everyone will come out for this great event. Movies in the Park returns to the Ice House Amphitheater starting on Friday, March 15, with Jumanji, and Friday, March 29, with Peter Rabbit. Those shows will start at 8:00 p.m., so bring the family out for free movies and a great time. Also, on March 9, the Lexington County Recreation Aging Commission Zoomathon will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Lexington Leisure Center. Admission is $10 or $5 for seniors 60 or over. All proceeds will benefit the Lexington County Meals on Wheels program. Several town boards will meet in March. The Advisory Committee will meet March 12 at 6:00 p.m. in the third floor conference room. The Traffic Committee will meet March 13 at 8:00 a.m. in the third floor conference room. The Planning Commission will meet on March 20 at 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. And if you'd like to get involved in one of our boards or commissions, go to the town's webpage and complete a Boards and Commissions application. Council will meet again on March 18 at 6 for our council work session meeting held in the Eli Mac Room. Thank you for watching your Town Council announcement tonight.
Very good. Before I thank Mr. Williams for reading the announcements tonight, I'd like for you to all join me and wish him a happy birthday. He has a birthday on March 6. Happy birthday, Mr. Williams. Is there any other member that would like to announce anything? Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker?
For those who are interested in this trash business that we were discussing, changing the 6:00 a.m., so what we have done is we have rejected the 6:00 a.m. option, but we are also going to explore other solutions to the issue. So what we have killed is the option for 6:00 a.m. And then the other thing is, I mean, we've talked about this, I know, just in the announcements, we've got a number of boards and commissions with openings on them, and we encourage folks to engage with us and to become part of what we've got going on. Some exciting stuff that's happening at the town of Lexington, and there are options for you to come and be a part of it with us. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Williams announced that the Advisory Committee is going to meet, and I think you're on that, Ms. Edie, aren't you? So one thing that, that we have sent to the Advisory Committee is the census, and that's very important. The census is happening in 2020, and that's how we get our funding from, from the federal government. So it's, it's very important that our Advisory Committee is going to work on that so that we can make sure everybody in the town of Lexington gets counted, because that helps with a lot of different issues. So I'm excited that the Advisory Committee is going to take that, and I know that they will do a fabulous job with it.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Manis. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none, do we have any comments from the news media? I don't believe we have anyone with us. Any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone here wish to speak? Yes, Ms. Harmon, please come forward. Come to the microphone so we can hear you, okay? Please state your name and address for the record.
Edith Harmon, and I live at 220 Metz Avenue in our historic Village District neighborhood, which is right downtown. I came prepared tonight to speak against the change in the garbage collection hours, but am I correct in observing that this is no longer a subject?
That's correct. We will continue to look and help alleviate the issue of some of the cans not being able to get picked up, but changing it to 6:00 a.m. was not an option.
Right. We were, our neighborhood was terrorized many years ago by early dumpster collection, and so we did not want to see this rear its head again.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Chuck Corley, 121 Burley Street. I wanted to reiterate what Ms. Edie said. You can't imagine how it feels at 3:00 in the morning, and you're just about to get to sleep good and bang, and it's over and over and over, and then you hear boom, boom, boom with the back of your neck. I appreciate some of y'all.
Can you do that one more time?
Replay, replay. But anyway, I appreciate it. I appreciate all y'all do for us, and thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Wearing good hands with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Sandy Collins. I live at 213 Bridlewood Court, which is outside the, the town of Lexington, I know, but I just wanted to, I've, I've emailed and talked with a lot about the inclusive playground and as a, a grandmother of a special needs child and a retired preschool teacher that has advocated and fought for these children, I just want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for what you're planning on doing, and I want to do, and I've got my friend Brianna, which, believe it or not, she was one of my students one day, but, but we would like to do whatever we can to make this playground inclusive for all the children in Lexington. Right now, Lexington One has over 3,500 children with disabilities, according to the Compliance Secretary. There's lots of things that we need to look at, like changing tables for people that are over 35 pounds that even this building does not have, so that when I bring my grandson here, we have to leave if there's a change. I know we're talking about all the different senses, but we need to talk about like the proprioceptive sense and the vestibular sense and all of those other things. Therapists use this playground. My grandson's learned to sign so many signs from the swinging aspect, and the other kids think that's really cool, and they're learning the signs, too, and it's just a way to make this community even better, and I've got, I've left my name and everything, and I just want to thank you, because it's a, it's a hard issue with me.
Yes, it is.
And here's the little guy that loves your little pirate wheel so much.
That's great.
Anyone with autism, you know, loves that spinning, so thank you so much.
Ms. Collins, thank you very much. I hope you are in, in contact with Mayor Protam?
She has volunteered to serve on the Parks Committee.
That's fantastic. Very good. Anyone here have any other comments? Yes, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Tom Mack. I live in Hopeberry Plantation. I appreciate the opportunity to have spoken with you earlier this week and your ability to be so approachable and the challenges of trying to get back to each other during the birthdays, so I really appreciate that. This was an issue about the dumpster emptying that Kathy Manis was kind enough to help me with several years back to get stopped from being awakened at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning with the dumpsters being emptied 200 feet off my back of my property at Uno's and 14 Carrot and so forth. So having here you reverse your position and, and look at other alternatives in the best interest of the quality of lifestyle that we have here in Lexington, I am very much appreciative, and this is, this is a great evening. Thank you.
You're welcome, Tom. Thank you very much, and thanks for your involvement, too.
Mr. Mayor, Hopeberry Plantation is very well represented in the audience tonight. Thank you, neighbors, for coming.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Ivana, I know we've seen you before, but please state your name and address for the record.
Ivana Garcia, I'm actually a resident of Columbia, but I am representing Lexington as Ms. Lexington. as Ms. Lexington. Regarding my proclamation, I just wanted to remind the town of Lexington that I am holding a tea, the Ladies of Lexington Tea, on April thirteenth, from two thirty to four thirty at private property. This tea is kid-friendly, and all proceeds will be going to Children's Wrinkle Network Hospitals, specifically the one in Columbia that I get to work at every once in a while. So, thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you.